Before we start our meeting tonight, we're going to have an invocation. Mal Gibson from the First Baptist Church is here. It's always great to see you, Mal. And Nancy is not able to be here, so we're going to ask the nominee to do our pledge. With that, we'll stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so far.
Please remain standing.
Let's pray. Our Father and our God, thank you for another successful, fair week. And we thank you for all the new businesses that are calling Connersville home. We continue to pray, Lord, for a season of economic renewal in our community. I pray for these council members as they make decisions. I pray that they will humble themselves and seek your wisdom. Give them unity as they resolve to do what is in the best interest of their fellow citizens. I thank you for their willingness, Father, to serve in leadership. I pray that they will govern with integrity and with courage. And I ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mal. You're welcome.
Thank you.
First order of business will be call the meeting order. Second will be roll call.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilwoman Weber? Councilwoman Shomol?
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
The records show five members of the council are here. We have a forum. We can do business. If you would please turn your cell phones on silent or vibrant or off or something. We appreciate it. We have the reading of the minutes of the last city council meeting. What are... Do you want to read?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion we passed as is presented.
Second.
Motion is second, that we pass the minutes as they were sent out to the council members. Any additions or corrections? None appearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I welcome everybody tonight. It's a very short agenda. Reading the minutes, we got done. Resolution 2014-27, first aid unit refund, ninety-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. That shouldn't take much to do that.
I make a motion to approve resolution.
Motion and a second. Any discussion about receiving money? We never discuss much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Money's in. Appointments, the Urban Enterprise Association. City council has two appointments. Gerald Holmes is up for reappointment. And David, counselor, has agreed to go on there. If you warn him. Mayor appointments are Jeff Redman. It's your pleasure. Gerald Holmes is serving on there. His terms up. Dave, counselor, is willing to go on because we asked Dave because he lives in the district and works at the district. That's why we asked him to go on there.
I move accept the appointments as announced to the Urban Enterprise Association.
Second.
Oh, second? Any discussion? Anybody out there? If you discuss it, you'll end up on it. None appearing? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointments made. Resolution 2014-28, maintenance of the 1220 Illinois Street Building. That's the big six-story building. We agreed with the company that is in the process of purchasing it that we would not exceed a thousand dollars in keeping the grass cut and boarding up some of the windows, keeping the doors boarded up since it's next to our place. And we don't want it to be a hazard for our children. They agreed to that. And when they close, they will pay the city. And we agreed that we would not spend any more money on it than a thousand dollars. Mr. Baker needs a resolution. We have an agreement with them that we can enter the property.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept Resolution 2014-28.
Second.
A motion and a second. Everybody understand what we're trying to do?
This is the building, the old pattern job?
Yep. We don't want kids to get hurt in there. We don't want a water line break. And so we're keeping it boarded up. We're keeping the weeds down. And while the redevelopment commission is in the process of redeveloping it.
Is this thousand dollars coming out of city funds or redevelopment funds?
No, they're coming out of the people that buy its funds. Right, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, they agreed to pay up to five hundred a month, I believe. The has... We're working on a memorandum of understanding, which hasn't been drafted yet.
Most cities don't have tax money. It's... We're kind of guarding their building so nothing happens to it while they're in the process of taking it.
That one thousand is total.
Okay.
Not for anything. It's just a total of one thousand.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, not to exceed. Probably primarily for mowing, I guess.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The record show one opposition. Four in favor, the motion passes. Old business. Anybody got any old business?
John, have we determined whether or not we own that property north of Park Road? The old rail bed?
Not yet. I haven't heard from Kenny since he started working with the surveyor.
I talked with him today. He was here. And he's working on it. He's working on another project.
Is he?
Yeah, he's not here tonight. I thought he might be.
Right, yeah, he's working with county surveyors, I recall, to try to determine if the entire line is over.
He's got all the deeds.
Right.
And there's a group, and I can't explain it properly, but there's a group that's got a big grant and is trying to get us included in the grant to do the trails. And let's see, you're on his committee.
Yeah, the bicentennial land trust.
Yeah.
That's it.
And who else is on that committee?
Connor.
Connor and real estate lady.
Shirley.
Shirley Rish. Right?
Well, it's Wise.
Wise.
Shirley.
It's Wise.
Okay.
She was the Rish.
Tell me, okay. Any other old business? Miscellaneous business. We got an issue, as I know you're all aware of, that in 2008... That's why these people, the Antilles, are here. They passed a sale ordinance that took away the benefit of selling sick days back to the city when you retired. And they also took away the severance package, which would be one day for each year that you worked there. They took that out in 2008, but it was effective 2009. We didn't have anybody but one person retire since that time. Well, there was a couple retired before it took effect. But after that, it took effect. There was nobody that had retired except Bill Ammerman. When Bill Ammerman left, he retired. He was paid his severance package and his sick days that he had accumulated up to eighty-four, if that was quite right. Okay. We now have had one, two, three people retire that were non-contractuals. And they put in for their sick days and their severance package. And Julie caught it and denied it. I was in the office when she did it. She did it properly because she called the State Board of Accounts and they said absolutely not unless it's in ordinance form, you can't pay it. And she could be in a limbo trouble if she paid it. So, in the meantime, they went ahead and retired. And they feel they're entitled to it because they feel they earned their money prior to 2008 change. And if I understand it right, they're asking to be paid up until 2008 for their sick days, which they had accumulated, and their severance package, which would be one day to pay for each year that they worked there at the 2008 rate. That's the decision that is before you tonight to establish. State Board of Account says the only way it can possibly be paid, if you make an ordinance, if you would have Mr. Baker draw an ordinance that would make it go back to that, make it retroactive to pick up that time so they could get it up until eight. There's no doubt it's not in the ordinance from nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. It's just not in there. Does everybody understand it? I've tried to write it. I've tried to explain it to you both in an executive session and now in public.
So you're saying the folks have not been compensated for their sick time up to 2008?
Well, that's right. Yeah, they accumulated, and I don't know their... They... If everyone's at eighty-four, but it's eighty-four days.
That's the most they can accumulate.
Most accumulated.
Okay.
If you use some of them, then you can accumulate. But if you didn't use them, you can accumulate up to eighty-four.
But the ordinance that we passed in December of 2008 went into effect January?
2008.
Okay. And this is a reason Julie did not pay this because the ordinance stated that it was not...
We've had six ordinances sent, and it's taken out of there.
Okay.
Councilman Creach, you are a member of the utility board. The time this change was made, could you explain to us why the change was made?
I can recall in 2008, we were in financial straits with Connersville Utilities. I was council's member on utility board. Unfortunately, seven people lost their job, myself, then utility attorney Tom Thompson, Julie Greason, and I can't remember if there's another one involved or not.
Was Bob Beeson.
Bob Beeson.
Richard Smith.
Richard Smith. We had known ways to reduce our cost, but I can't recall word for word. And did we not reduce some pays to... You remember?
I think they wanted to reduce Karen's salary a little bit. Didn't they care?
Like, anyway, there was cost reductions. There was cost reductions made. And I do remember that the elimination of the accrued sick days was eliminated. And the one day of per-year service was eliminated. Am I correct, Julie, we did that? But that's why it was done, was to reduce our cost.
Cost-saving measures.
Right.
And the employees were aware of it, in your opinion? Aware of what we did?
I would think so. Because there's two... There was two of them, two of them that chose retirement.
I see.
To protect their... That time they got dollar-year insurance, that protected them and their sick days and their one day per year of service up to thirty years.
Now, if I'm correct, there's... These three folks aren't the only people in fault and affected by this, correct? There's other folks that have not retired?
Well, there are six girls that are in the office still that have been over there.
That have accumulated days.
And this was just salary personnel?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move we draft an ordinance to pay for the sick days for the folks that accumulated through 2008 at the 2008 wages.
Are you talking about all or just these three?
All of them. Because I, you know, I just sort of fix the problem now that we've found it and then just get done with the problem.
So...
That's six people. Julie gave you a printout on that tonight.
Yeah, if I may ask, so what you're saying gave...
It's more than that.
No, there's six, seven, eight, nine. There's no... Yeah, excuse me.
Gave it... If I may ask, what we're saying is paying the folks, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine folks up to December 31st?
Yeah, 2008.
For the sick days they accrued.
I mean, it'd have to go through the ordinance. So John would have to draft something like that.
Yeah.
We can't pay it until you draft an ordinance. And remember, you must pass it.
Yeah, are you making out a form as a motion?
He did.
I will second it.
Motion and a second, that we... You want to read it?
Draft a salary ordinance to pay out unused sick days, I just guess we should say, for non-contractual employees at the Connersville Utilities through 2008 at their 2008 rate of pay.
That's exactly how I said it.
I don't even have it all written down yet.
Would you like to put the amount in there? Or is that necessary?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. Fifty-three thousand?
Fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six, ten is what the utility office gave you, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. We're ready for discussion.
On the people that are not retiring, we will go on and pay it out and be completely done with it. We'll do that now.
That's what the motion says. And when they retire, this thing won't come up.
Because my understanding is, Your Honor, with utility employees, salary personnel, they still get sick days. They just don't accrue. Am I correct?
Get twelve days, just like every other non-contractual in the city gets twelve sick days.
I want to benefit for the community. I knew that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I've listened to your motion. I've listened to repeat it. You did not address the severance pay. I presume that's... You don't want that to be addressed?
When you say severance pay, you mean as they refer to as good standing or the...
In 2008, there was a severance pay and one day for each year they were there if they left in good standing. He did not address that in the motion.
Yeah, it's not in the seven additional ordinances, correct? So I think that was something that was understood.
Now, see, you're wanting an ordinance drafted to pay or to pay through 2008 retroactivity for sick days only and not severance pay.
Yes, sir.
Severance or whatever it was called, or one day per year. I'll figure it out. Yeah, all right.
Well, severance pay is really more like a retirement issue usually, correct?
Yeah. Okay. Let's not confuse the issues here. Let's just stick with it here where we are.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
No, my... My reason I second this motion is because I told with Gabe, this is what we owe those individuals. They had accrued that up to December 31st. But nothing about any longer retirement package or retirement days. This is just on sick days.
All right. Any further discussion? I'm going to call for the question.
Do you want to ask comments from the floor?
Well, it's a positive motion, and I don't want to screw it up. We can't change the motion anyway. This is a positive motion. I want to vote on this issue, and then you can have comments on any other issue you want to.
Love to talk about it. That sounds fine.
He may not... He may not want it.
Oh.
He may change his mind.
No, it's my understanding from the retirees that we're not disagreeing with those. It's the second issue. So if you want to proceed with that and then make a motion pro or con on the next issue?
All I'm voting on David's sick days, but...
Okay.
You're not voting on severance or the one day that was given per year?
No, the motion reads... Julie, state the motion again.
Ask city attorney to draft a salary ordinance to pay out unused sick days for non-contractual utility employees through 2008 at their 2008 rate of pay.
Period. Nothing else to address. All right. Thank you. Are you ready for the question? Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shomol?
No.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach?
Yes.
Four to one.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, this means that they'll put together an ordinance for the next meeting to address this issue. Did you hear me? They will put an ordinance together to address this issue for the next meeting. Okay. Now, we'll pass that. If you want to come forth and talk about that, the other issue, the severance, you're holding your own.
I believe all of you know me. I'm David Duddy, a previous utilities manager. I was with Connersville Utilities forty years, thirty-six years in the union, four years in management. With me is Karen Laura, the retired utilities office manager with forty-eight years of service, and Mary Ellen Blanton, who's the retired wastewater superintendent with thirty-five years of service. And we appreciate your positive vote in the sick days issues. It does clarify a lot of things, including current employees. The severance, as we're calling it, is a pay of one day pay for every year of service up to thirty years. And that's the max. That's the way it was previously. That's what Bill Ammerman was paid when he retired just ten months ago. He retired under the same language that we retired under. Julie says that was a mistake, and we didn't know that it was. No one ever told us it was. We chose a retirement date and the manner in which we would use our received finances to calculate the date we were going to retire. So we anticipated that one day of service, one day pay for every year of service up to thirty years. If any of us, any of the three of us, would have retired until 2008, we would have received that severance pay. We didn't. We stayed on. So I think it's right. Not only did you already pay someone under an identical reading of a ordinance that we retired under, but it's just the right thing to do. It was mentioned this afternoon at the Board of Works meeting that how we were pleased to see Leonard go on behalf of this town employees to make sure that they got what they deserved when they retired. Now, what the board did after that, I don't know, but that was... He was supported by the city to go and do that. We ask you now to support this again, pay us what we earned. If we would have left back then, we would have got thirty days pay, the severance pay. Yet we're not now, only because we stayed until 2014. I think it's the right thing to do. If there was an ordinance in place that said, "We got that," would you pay us? I would think you would. It's my understanding from a meeting we had with Julie and Leonard and John that an ordinance could be put in place for this instant only and pay us for our years of service. You can do that. You can do that now, and it's the right thing to do. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Karen, would you like to speak?
The only thing we haven't touched on...
I want you to come to the podium, please.
The only thing that we haven't touched on is that it's still around.
Come on to the podium.
That's all I'm going to say.
I could speak on her behalf. What she's mentioning is that in the personnel policy, it still states that we get one day pay for every year of service up to thirty years. It still says that. The Board of Works has the control over that personnel policy. It's not been changed. So in it, it still says that's what we get. So we had no reason to think we would not get that. And that's why we were stunned when, less than twenty-four hours before we retired, Leonard came to me and said, "We're not paying you." So I don't see any reason why you can't for this instant only pass...
I want to defend that decision because it is my responsibility to see that we don't break the law. Had we paid that money out, we would have broken the law. We can't... We just couldn't do that. I mean, we called State Board of Accounts and they said, "Absolutely, don't pay it." And when they tell you, "Don't pay that kind of money," you don't pay it.
But you can now change that.
It wasn't my decision.
You can now fix that.
It takes this...
By...
It takes this whole board to change this, or at least the majority of this.
Well, those here can go ahead and do the right thing and pass an ordinance for this instance only because everything else is clarified with what else you did earlier, and pay the three of us what we are owed.
And then what do we do with the six that's left over there? Do we wait?
Well, they're still retired.
No, I know.
I mean, they're still employed, so...
Do we change it now then for the future, or do we wait until they retire and go through this again? It's time to clear all this up.
I'm not sure. I don't want to confuse one employee with another. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, Karen, and Mary Ellen.
I understand that, but do you see the problem here? If you pay you three severance here seven years after the ordinance was changed, and then someone comes down and retires in 2018, nineteen, or twenty-two, how do you handle that?
I don't know.
The council was trying to clear this all up, so it was taken care of once and for all. It was clear. And when I hired all the new people and they moved out of the union, we had them sign an agreement. They understood. This is what it is. You get twelve sick days. They go away every year. You... There's no severance pay. You took management.
Well, I believe you did that.
We did that.
To make sure that they understood.
Yeah.
We never had that option to understand and be sure.
We'd be okay with you if we addressed one issue at a time. We got this cleared up on the sick pay. He's going to build an ordinance. Let's get the ordinance built and pass it and...
Well, in order for us to proceed with this, if this is not a positive vote, I think you ought to address it soon.
John, I've got a legal question for you. If we were to establish an ordinance to pay the severance pay, would that set like a legal precedence or something like that?
You would have to apply to everyone that is in similar circumstances.
So then these other...
Two thousand eight.
These other six folks would... It would affect them as well.
Well, we're the only three who are currently retired, and that's what we're addressing. The people who are currently retired under the same conditions of previous utility manager retired. He got paid everything. We did not.
I think that was... I think that's a mistake. I think that'll be corrected later. So, I mean, I wouldn't hang my hat on that one. But these other...
I didn't understand that, Gabe.
I think that'll be... That's something we'll have to address later. Because I think that's a mistake, and mistakes happen. Sometimes you have to address those things later, so...
So you're saying you're going to address our issue later?
No, the mistake with what was paid to Bill. But there's six other folks that are in the same position that were under the 2008 ordinance, but now could retire in the future, correct? So then...
In the not-too-distant future.
John, would that then apply to them as past practice?
Well...
From a legal standpoint?
It would be extremely difficult to justify an ordinance that excluded them. I just... Would almost be inappropriate. If you're going to have a class of people you're dealing with, you have to include everyone in that class.
So then it wouldn't be just for these three folks, but it'd be for all these folks on the list here that was it nine?
Well, maybe only one that was in a management position.
People that are in management, yeah, right.
But the ordinance didn't address management. It addressed non-contractual employees.
Yeah, non-contractual.
That's the problem. And how do you determine that? If you... See, with the sick days, we can go back now and pay all nine people out because we know what they got coming. The utility office can tell us. We know exactly how many sick days each one's got coming. We can pay that out. In fact, we think we already got it. They gave it to us over there. But how... They're not retiring, so how would you know? You know what I mean? How would you know what to... You can't go pay them for retirement when they didn't retire. So this could be coming up and up and up each year. One retires, and then you got this issue again. It's an issue that's got to be addressed some other way, not with an ordinance, right? Not at this time. I think we need to get this one covered.
Well, you told, you told us in that meeting we had, you, Julie, and John, that it would take an ordinance in order for us to get-
For the sick days.
An, oh, in, in order for us to get what we were to get when we retired.
Do you recall that meeting, John? Was it sick days, or was it, we were talking about?
Oh, we did say it would take an ordinance, a change of the ordinance for us to pay it.
Right.
Yes.
And that's all I'm asking for, is it, is it ordinance to change that so that we can be paid?
Did I understand right that there were two people that retired early in order to keep their severance pay, and they were aware that they would lose it if they worked into two thousand and nine?
No, they, they did that so they could keep their insurance at a dollar a year.
Those things were all, you know, yeah.
They're all attached together.
Both of them were.
I think they retired for three reasons: insurance, severance, and, uh, sick days.
That I don't know. It's my understanding-
I wasn't on, I wasn't on the utility ordinance.
It's my understanding it was health insurance reasons.
I'm sure that had a lot to do with it, 'cause you got to ke, keep your health insurance for ten years, didn't you? But, uh, you get to keep it to your sixty-five.
Yes. Well, of course, I paid ten percent.
Ten percent.
Not the dollar a year.
The, the utility's paying ninety percent of yours.
Yeah, because overall, uh, the amount of our insurance compared to what the rest of the city pays is, is considerably less.
Do you want to continue to work this severance issue tonight, or you want to get this taken care of? What do you want to do?
Can you, can you repeat what you just said about something about the city paying less?
Uh, Conner's utilities, both bargaining unit and non-bargaining unit, is under a health insurance called LineCo. No other city entity department has that. They are all under the, um-
We have two different insurances.
Do you?
Part of the unions, um, the transfer station, the street department, EMS, the parks are under their union insurance, like you guys are under your union insurance.
We have three insurances.
Then the police, fire, and the non-contractual are with IAC insurance.
Now, that, uh, the monthly premium is less than fourteen hundred dollars a month, but in the, that case, both family and single people pay this exact same amount. There's no difference between that.
The RWDSU plan's pretty similar to that, isn't it, Tom?
I'm sorry?
The RWDSU plan, that's pretty similar to their-
Yes.
Their plan.
Very, very similar.
They pay one amount whether you're a single family, and it's considerably less than the IAC insurance is also.
Mary Ellen, did you want to speak?
I'm trying to keep my mouth.
Come on up to the podium, because we're on TV, and we'll get you on the camera here. I think it's behind my head.
I'm trying to be quiet. I, uh, I agree, yes, but at the same time, I get where you're coming from with the severance. I do understand that. I, I retired under an ordinance in which that language did not exist. I get that. I'm not going to say I'm happy about not getting that money, 'cause I'm not. I mean, I thought we would, because Bill got it, but I'm thrilled that you're willing to give us our sick days. So, um, I'm not trying to be separate from Dave and Karen here, or, um, be liberal their issues.
Nor is she trying to negotiate.
No.
Because that's what our attorney does.
So I-
We're here under good faith, trying to work something out before everybody goes to litigation.
Wait, wait, I mean, if you have an attorney, then why-
We don't.
Why is he talking to us?
That's, that's the-
I didn't say we had one.
That's the issue.
I thought you just said you had an attorney.
Before we talked, before we discussed the attorney.
Let's, uh, let's take the issue we got done tonight. We've covered a big part of it with these sick days. Let's let it ride, let everybody cool down.
I appreciate that.
And, and let's get that done, and, uh, you know, i- if you were going to file a suit against the city, you've got a year, I believe, to do it, or, uh, so let's, let's get this paid and everybody cool off. This is a tough issue for these people up here. When we're in the straits we're in, and to say we're going to put out fifty-three thousand-
In the straits you're in, remember, Conner's utilities is in a lot better shape than it was years ago when, when Tom was on it.
It's, it's in better shape, because we had to raise the water rate three times, which raises the sewer rate, and it's in good shape, because these people up here were very careful about the way they handled it. And it's, it's in good shape, because you worked hard at it, and it's in good shape. But when you start handing out fifty-three thousand dollars, these people have to face the public. So let's, let's let this issue go for tonight, and we got most of the issue taken care of.
Will you be keeping us abreast of what's happening?
No, you need to come back again, or negotiate with, uh, the three of you, talk with Baker and I, and see what we can do here, but I just feel like we've, we've, we've taken a big step tonight for these people to step forward and do this. And I don't think you realize how big a step that is.
I do.
It's a big step. And, and, you know, and many, many people in this city can't separate utility from city money. And I keep saying, the utility is a company owned by the city, operated separately. It's operated by the Board of Works. And, uh, the city council tonight has gone back seven years and said, "Yes, we feel like the right thing to do, they earned this money, and to give them their pay." And I think they've done the right thing here, and I don't want to mess it up.
So we should, uh, set an appointment with you and city attorney in order to continue this discussion?
Well, why don't we get this, why don't we get this ordinance passed? You know, they still got to pass an ordinance here, and one, two people are missing tonight. Let's, let's get this ordinance passed and not muddy the water, okay? He's going to build an ordinance. You know what to build, John?
I think so.
Okay. Well, we'll get this ordinance in here, and, uh, I think the less talking we do now, let's get the ordinance passed and get that money paid. Clear up those girls over at the office, and then, uh-
And that's a fair thing to do, by the way.
And, and we can do it with sick pay, because we know exactly what it is, but you don't have any idea when they're retiring, or if they're retiring, and what ordinance do we retire them under? Would it be fair to give it to you and say, "Nope, from here on, it's over, we can't give it anymore," or to put it on the next mayor, and the next mayor, and the next mayor, while they're retiring, to argue it out every time someone retires? We need to think this through. We, we gotta have, we need to know what we're doing, but we got the big part of it done tonight.
But we'd appreciate fair consideration.
Do, do you understand what I'm saying?
I hear you.
So, you know, that's a bigger thing to settle than what this was, because we know where we're going here. We know eighty-four sick days, it's clear as a bell. And Julie wants to pay them all out, so it doesn't come up again? That's all right with me. That's what we did when the people came out of the union, that's what we did with you. We paid you for coming out of the union, your sick days, right? You did.
Well, yeah, fine, like-
What do you like to, what do you like to point out?
Yeah, when I retired.
It should have been done in two thousand and ten, but nobody really thought about it at that point in time.
Well, that's because I thought I was going to accumulate sick days, and then when I retired, I get paid for them. See, with-
Well, wait, now, you can accumulate sick days, 'cause it went away in two thousand eight, payable now.
Yeah.
So you couldn't have, so you knew that, didn't you?
But, no, I didn't.
Being the director of the utilities, and you didn't know that?
I did not know that. Uh, I, uh, if I would have gotten sick, you know, just a month before I left, let's say I had a stroke or something, I would have left and had been sick, you would have paid me for accumulated days. They are accumulated.
Right, after you got sick.
The sick days are taken care of, so we won't muddy the water.
Karen, uh, since, were you aware that these changes were made?
Yes, indeed. I will come up. This is what I know.
You were the office manager, you had to know this.
Yeah, this is what I know, and I think Julie probably remembers better than I do, but I know that we were, I don't want to say forced, we were told that salary ordinance wouldn't pass unless those benefits went away. We were also told that the union was going to lose those benefits as well, they would be negotiated away. That didn't happen. At some point during Bill's tenure, the question came up, you know, what, did we just lose everything? I mean, is that going to be something that we gave up when we continued to work? And Bill had a meeting, I believe, and it was with John, and I was fairly certain it was with you and with Julie.
I do not remember the meeting. Do you remember the meeting, John?
How long ago was this meeting?
It was during Bill's time.
How many years ago?
And he came back to the office and assured us that we, we would not lose those benefits, that we had accrued them through the end of two thousand eight, and they would not go away. And so we were all under the assumption that it was coming to us, and as I pointed out in our meeting, when Bill received his payment, knowing Bill and knowing how honest he is, if he had thought he wasn't, shouldn't have been paid for that, he would have said something. We all thought we had it coming, and the union still gets it.
So what you could do is go ahead and back up to two thousand eight, as if we retired then and pay us for those days.
But see, Dave, this, I wouldn't have said anything, but I can't keep my big mouth shut. Th- this is the thing, okay? And I truly felt, you folks, you were owed these sick days up to two thousand eight. Okay, now, two of those gentlemen, they chose to retire. I cannot believe that they didn't put some thought in, like, okay, am I going to get this, this severance package? Am I going to get this? Am I going to get that? Uh, it's kind of like, you made the choice to go from hourly to salary, okay? There's some benefits, and there's some, not so many benefits with that. Uh, two gentlemen just came from, uh, hourly to salary. I think they got their sick days. Am I correct?
They paid out their sick days, but they had-
So for us to change an ordinance, I don't mean just for you folks personally, but just for these handful of people, perhaps the other city employees can go, can say, "Well, you know what? In two thousand eight, I got a dollar-year insurance," and they changed the ordinance on me. You see where we're sitting at, Dave?
I understand.
I mean, I'm not saying you have to agree, I'm, I'm not saying it. I'm just saying, you got to look where we're sitting at, too. And, and folks had choices to retire or not to retire, and I know everybody factors in. I think there's a couple of gentlemen, 'cause there's going to be a little cut, uh, on, through the perk, that they chose to retire this fall early, because of that, they were concerned about their perk. But, uh, you know, that's all I'm saying.
I will say that I believe that if the, and I believe it's true, that you, that you folks knew you weren't supposed to get this, that I think Bill Ammerman-
We're not debating that, that's the point.
Yeah, but, well, I know we were, had contracts, well, we made a lot more money at Stance, and then all of a sudden, they came through and went-
Yeah.
It happens when there's problems. But I do believe that Mr. Ammerman should, that money should come back, 'cause if that was a mistake, then there should be a way to get that money back.
I don't want that to happen, Bill.
I know you don't want it to happen, but you, you want it through in our face, that he got it, and we're not going to give it to you.
Well, uh, what's gonna-
And what's fair is fair.
What's, what's going to happen on Mr. Ammerman when we're audited? We haven't been audited for thirteen yet. When we're audited, that's going to come up, and you've been in, uh, closely days of audits with us, you know how it works. The auditor's going to sit there and look at Julie and I, and tell us exactly how it's going to be, and that's what they're going to do. Uh, we have no-
They did indicate that it was a mistake, though. I mean, they agreed that it was a mistake. Yes, they did.
But I mean, that's what's, we don't know what's going to happen to us when they audit, 'cause we're the ones that eventually, 'cause you were there. You, you know how those audits work.
Well, we're just telling you what we have been told, and what is still in our personnel policy manual, and we're not trying to-
I am just, I am just pleased that we've been able to rectify the most of it right now.
We appreciate that.
And at that point, let's let it go until we get that done, 'cause we're in the process. And there's two people missing tonight, and I don't want to get anybody upset, so they walk the other way. We, 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 all we got now is the council saying, "Build the ordinance." We still got to pass it three times, 'cause it's an ordinance, okay?
So the other, we'll just talk about it. We'll talk about it later.
I think, I think we could sit down and talk about it, and, but I'd like to get this done. Excuse me. It's okay.
All right, thank you.
Is that all right with the council? John, you look at me a little bit.
Well, I, I was going to step in and say something earlier, but, and it kind of went with what, something about you said. I, I don't mean to oversimplify this, because it sort of is, because there's so much with utilities that we don't understand, like we went through the last three weeks. But, and, and I, I, please correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I probably will be, but, and no offense to, like, Fran and, and Tom, but they've been around for a while, and they know this stuff. But, you know, I wasn't here and probably didn't pay as much attention as I, as I should have as a citizen of Connersville, when the whole utility board, all that happened, and, and it's, to me, I say to myself, "Okay, now the utilities is sort of like a department of the city." And even though we talk and we debate, and I've had questions come at me, like, "Well, why do you keep talking about these, the, the monies, the money, the utility money is different?" Well, because it is, because the ratepayers pay it, and it has to pay for those hundred-year-old pipes that are, we're hoping don't burst under all of our houses, you know?
I think a simplified is good. It's like, in utility, an electric company, it's elect, you pay your electric bills, and pays for that. Gas comes, gas-
Right, you, you're, you're, you're one of the departments, the few, the only, I guess the only, that are actually bringing in enough for your salary.
Self-sufficient?
Yeah, you're self-sufficient. So, um, I was in total agreement about what was fair, that you earned those times, but I think if, if we include all those nine people and kind of, like, get it done, and then move forward like all the other city employees, I think, I think personally that we all need to be more of an even keel, whereas utilities doesn't have, like, kind of like their own set of rules. And I, like, and I shouldn't say it like that maybe, but that's just kind of where I'm coming from. And, and I was, you know, thought that that was fair. And like I said, I think it's an oversimplification, obviously, but to get more on the same page with what, like, city secretaries as compared to utilities, no, no different benefits for, because I think it, it's, I think of it as another, you know, the department, and, I don't know. Julie's wanting to say something.
Okay.
Thanks, David.
Thanks. Anything else under miscellaneous business? Mayor's update, we had a wonderful fair, probably in my fifty years, the best I've ever seen one. You couldn't park another car in the park most of the time, the dinners were wonderful.
Definitely, best weather.
Everything was fun.
The weather was awesome.
The weather was wonderful.
Awesome.
And Gabe tried to get my daughter to take a duck home.
Yeah.
Thank God I talked him out of that. Uh, I've had everything from guinea pigs, adults, cats, and I don't need a duck.
So you should have got a duck.
She's leaving in two weeks, you know, we'll be stuck with the duck.
I'm going to go back. Call it name, Donald.
You could have given him two.
Um, yeah. Donald, please, you're-
Under the quote, "Treasurers update, you got your finances." Now, you've got a special finance sheet tonight. We have been trying to figure out how we could tell what the future was, and with a lot of meetings last week, Julie and Pam came up with this. I think it's the best financial sheet that I've ever seen since I've been here, that kind of tells us where we are, and, uh, it's easy to read, tells you what we had in the bank, tells you what we expect to get the next, between now and Christmas, and then it tells you what we have to pay out of that bunch, and it shows you that we have a minus of one seventy-one, eight eighty-three, twenty-two. Now, everybody thinks that's bad, but me, because I was looking at this three months ago, thinking we were going to be three hundred thousand short, and we're only a hundred and seventy-one thousand short. Uh, the bottom tells you that the draw in December usually runs from five to seven hundred thousand shorter than the spring draw, and it shows you what we have in Riverboat, what is promised in Riverboat, and what would be left. So it gives you a good picture of where we are when you make decisions. And if you've noticed, ever since March five, we haven't had any additional appropriations. That's why the meetings go so fast. Additional appropriations take three votes, or two votes by law, and if you notice, we don't have any of those, because we're not doing any additions. I'm not saying in December we may not run into something where we have to pass an additional someplace. We're trying to transfer and keep things going. The only place we're spending money, basically, is where we've promised a match on a grant, or where we have to fix a piece of equipment.
We'll commit it to county on several departments. We pay fifty percent, nine-one-one.
I also know that the ambulance is of great interest to you. This morning, Julie and I, and the president of the county commissioners, Dale...
Phil.
And Phil, met with an ambulance company that can take our box off of our ambulance and put it on a Chevy Duramax diesel chassis, which will still fit in our door. And we're waiting to get a price on that. We've also got a price from two other companies. Our box is good. They say it'll go another ten years. All we need to do is get a chassis under there that'll go to the scene and come back to the hospital.
Now, is that the one you said that, uh, when we talked about that, that the county would help half the cost of that?
Well, here's what we're gonna do. Here's what we'd like to do.
Okay.
We have about eighty thousand dollars coming back from Medicaid. We think. We haven't got to check, but we think. Through billing, we're getting this back. Not that anybody made a mistake. We applied for this money. We're getting it back. We owe fifty thousand on the present ambulance. It was financed for fifteen years, which, that was a long time. We'll pay that ambulance off, and we'll take what money we got out of that eighty and lease purchase the new chassis to put under the box. We shouldn't be any worse off than we are today, and the payment should be maybe just a hair less because the interest rates down. If we can do that, I think we've accomplished something, because this ambulance is dangerous. It doesn't get back from the scene. Fails almost every week or two. Dale?
Yeah.
This...
For the public's benefit, your honor, this is the ambulance we've had trouble with since day one.
In fact, I'll tell you what. Maybe I shouldn't say this. You know what they offered us for it? Offered, they, they're willing to take it in on trade. You know what they offered to give us for it today? Five hundred dollars.
For the chassis.
For the chassis. We keep the box. I told them, no, we'll keep it. The tires are worth more than that. I don't know what we're gonna do with it. Phil said maybe we'll part it out or do something. I don't know.
Okay.
So that's just a kind of rundown where we're trying to go. This isn't gonna get done until probably December, January. There's a backlog of these ambulances with these six-oh engines. They're converting. They're ninety days out. They've converted a lot of them. Any questions on the mayor's part here?
Yeah, on this, uh, um, hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars shortfall in December, that's what the, the savings measures in place that we put in place there is, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
So we're still in pretty good trouble.
It doesn't, of course, it doesn't include our December tax draw. It's not like we'll end the year in the red, but, you know, that's what we have to operate the end of December.
End of December.
They're...
Just exactly when we need it.
But, you know, that's our operating money for six months, first six months next year.
The following year.
So next year is gonna be really tight.
I think so.
Well, we'll, we'll put together another sheet like this, and we'll keep watching it, and we keep our savings in place.
We know, and I said earlier at the Board of Works meeting, these are my best guesstimates.
Guess, yeah.
That's about as good as I can do on that. There is no surety on these.
I'm surprised nobody asked how we got that claims. What we did, we took three months' claims after we put the emergency in, added the three together and divided by three, and that's where we got the average claim. So we're averaging on the lowest claims. We're not averaging on high claims. Because that's what we expect to have over the next five months, is low claims. I'm, I'm happy with this. I, that, that looks a lot better than three hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, uh, public for, forum. Ruby, your yard looks pretty. Want to come up and talk?
I've got spider bits, so you gotta go and watch it.
You got spider bits?
Yeah.
I got stung by a yellowjacket. Took a week to get it.
I've had two IVs, and I'm taking, uh, three hundred grams of, uh, like, phyllosil. It just bit her, but it moves around. It was here, my hands were all swollen up, and now the hands went down, but it's over here. My shoulder's puffy over here.
Did you kill the spider?
I don't know. I didn't see it, but they, they scratched it and found out what kind it was. It's a brown one. I'm gonna put gloves on now.
Well, you got a pretty yard.
I enjoy doing it.
You must do it early in the morning, because I go by there, I never see you in there.
Early in winter, late night.
Anything else under public forum besides that? Did you go to the music Friday night?
No.
It was very successful. I had a hundred and twenty-three people, and they loved it. It went over good. They cleaned it before they went in there, and it was clean as a pin when they came out.
You talked about the old...
The cut, the bluegrass music people.
I'm not older than that yet.
Well, when you get there. Anything else under public forum? I'm ready for an adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't, wait a minute. I didn't ask you folks. Do you have anything?
I'm good.
Oh, yeah, I got something. Uh, just hope all the kids have a great time going back to school on Wednesday.
That's me.
I'll hurry back, so.
It doesn't affect me in any way. First time in twenty-six years.
Hope they have a great time going back, have a great school year.
So, did you have anything, Fran? I will tell you, Fran did a race over at Whitewater Racetrack the other night, which they called a race, and he didn't get in till two, one-twenty or two-twenty.
Two-twenty.
Oh, my Lord.
Can you imagine being out two-twenty in the morning?
No.
My mother would have whipped me.
I was there. I could see you, Fran.
Were you there?
Yeah.
Were you?
You stayed till two-twenty?
You were part of the crowd that left.
Yeah.
I have a motion on Florida adjournment. I have a second. Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?